Recording in progress.
All right, everybody, I got six thirty-two. We'll call the regular meeting of the council to order. Roll call, please.
David will not be here. Andrew.
Here.
Mark Kirkie.
Here.
Emma.
Here.
Todd Faith.
Here.
Cindy.
Here.
John.
Here.
Crystal.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And Justin.
Here. Uh, pledge allegiance.
All right, item number two, approval of the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four regular council minutes.
This is Crystal. I would move approval.
Steve, all second.
I got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council? John?
Chad wanted me to invite everybody to the fire station groundbreaking of the twenty-sixth at two o'clock. At the site, of course.
That's exciting.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right, now we'll move on to item number four, which is the first period for public comment. Any members of the public wish to make a comment? You can do so now.
Hi, Randy Skinner, E eight one eight seven Mapledale Road. I'm a member of the Verona Historic Preservation Commission and the Visitor Center Task Force, just here to encourage a vote for yes on the pre-op to the CD for the CDI grant, which is coming up. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Hello, Karen Innes, E seven eight four four Cherry Grove Road, Verona. I'm on the task force for historic preservation and I'm really excited about the support we've already received for this project of the Welcome Center, Verona Welcome Center, and would appreciate your continued support and success with the project. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Driscoll, six oh nine South Rock. I am also on the committee for the Welcome Center and I am excited about it and I've talked to so many people that are excited and I hope you will confirm and be as excited and thrilled about the project as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody online that would like to make a public comment?
If anybody online would like to make a public comment, they can do so at this time.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number five, which is review and approval of extraterritorial certified survey map for Edelweiss LLC.
Okay, this is a map that you've probably seen before. If you want to pull that up, Nate, they take, they've taken the property. This is actually off of County SS in the extraterritorial property area. I took it to plan commission. However, we did not have a quorum for that night. So there, this is coming forward with not a recommendation from them, but the ones that were there have seen this before and they, they were in approval of it. It just wasn't a formal approval. So I'm just forwarding it without a recommendation. So they're basically chopping the house. There's another smaller, if you can see kind of where it's been mowed, that's kind of where the parcel will be amongst that. So with it being an extraterritorial, they do have the right to have this approved. It's just coming forward to you for informational purposes. So we're looking for a recommendation and approval from you guys.
Cindy, I recommend approval of the extraterritorial certified survey map for Edelweiss.
Todd, I'll second it.
Edelweiss, I should say. Tell the song.
Right. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number six, discussion with possible action on resolution to open custodial accounts with perishing LLC and engage others' investment partners as investment advisor.
Right. So I'll make an introduction here. We have Jim with us from Ellers and Jim, rather than try to butcher your last name, I'm going to let you introduce yourself a little bit more, but we've been working with Jim, some other members of Ellers, Sean and Josh as well over the past week. Jim, I think you spoke with Lori this morning to kind of walk through this to catch her up to speed. And so there was a few items that are in the packet and we'll sort of let Jim kind of walk you through it from here. And Jim, you'll just have to let me know how you would like me to scan through the pages.
Thanks so much, Nate. I really appreciate it. Jim Gretsch, like Gretchen without the E N. So you don't say the O. It's just one of those goofy names. So I can always tell when it's a telemarketer calling. I'm an investment advisor with Ellers and we're an independent employee-owned firm that, that all, the only type of work we do is municipal finance. So we help issuers and municipalities such as yourself look for opportunities to borrow at the lowest possible cost and be as efficient as possible with the proceeds, which is where I come in. What the process would look like is for a bond issue, there's a period of time where the funds have been received by the municipality, but have not yet been spent on their projects. So especially right now, there's a unique opportunity to earn pretty significant interest on those funds in a very safe way. So what we had discussed with Nate and Lori on, on the calls that we've had is taking a portion of those unspent, yet unspent proceeds from the bond issue and using that to buy a portfolio of primarily US treasuries, which are yielding north of five percent, even with our fee, it would most likely be over five percent net to you. So if we were to invest a million dollars, you'd be looking at a return of about fifty thousand and change. And I believe that is outlined on, what is that, page eight or nine, Nate? So really, really the process is the funds are placed in a third-party custodial account where Ellers has no access to the funds other than to place trades, send you money and deduct our fees. So you may have heard a lot of talk about the Federal Reserve, they're meeting right now to discuss interest rates. So we, we're in a, in a really uniquely favorable environment for issuers such as yourselves in that shorter-term interest rates are higher than longer-term interest rates, which is not normal. But it's favorable to you because you're borrowing at longer-term rates and, and earning on short, short-term interest rates. So it's just a really unique opportunity for us to put some significant dollars in the, in the pocket of the village for, for their project. So again, these are essentially risk-free investments, US treasuries, backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government. They're the most liquid securities in fixed income. So what we would do is we would build a portfolio to this draw schedule that's outlined there and make sure that the funds are available every single time you need it. And it's, it just offers a lot of flexibility and just a really good opportunity to be efficient with the proceeds from your, from your project until they're spent. So I'm happy to answer any questions or go into further detail at anyone's request. I know I said that fast.
I'm wondering, we draw on it then on a schedule and there's no penalties if, if we have to go off schedule or how does that work?
Correct. So, so our, our three charges as municipal advisors or municipal investment advisors are safety, liquidity and yield. So these securities would be available to be sold in, in the market whenever you needed the money. So draw schedules, we've seen thousands of them. They almost never go exactly as planned due to weather or material shortages, things like that. But yeah, these are, these are the safest, most liquid and easily saleable investments in existence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Jim. So just for context, just remember, we are talking about the money that is hanging out for the fire station project that we bonded for and received in our account on, on and around June sixth. The, one of the questions that I had Jim and the group when I was online with them was specifically around risk management. Obviously, we need these funds. We borrowed for them for the fire station. Risk management is always the name of the game. And so I asked probably in several different ways and they got tired of me asking is like, okay, but what's the risk? You know, if we're out in the investment field, what's the risk? And so I don't know if, for this group, Jimmy can just maybe elaborate on, on that just a tiny bit more so that we feel confident. I know you said risk-free, but I know very few things in life are risk-free.
Sure. Certain, certainly. And, and you're right to be cautious. You know, that's good governance. So these securities are, are backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government. So in an, in an end-of-the-world situation, your portfolio and cockroaches would be about the only things out there. If, if the US government were to stop paying its obligations, it never has in, in the history of, of the republic. If it, if it did, that would be the, you know, kind of worst-case real, like actual doomsday type of scenario. These are the building blocks that the entire financial system is based on. Every bank would be out of business. It's just, it's really, so from a credit risk, the, the risk of not getting your money back is, is as close to zero as it possibly can be. There is no real zero risk, but that's as close as you can get. The only other risk would be considered interest rate risk, which would be that if you, if you bought a treasury today and sold it tomorrow, it might be worth less due to, you know, changes in, in interest rates. These are so short that in term, that if you were to, you know, sell it prior to maturity, it's incredibly unlikely that a loss would be incurred. So this is, I need you to just use your imagination a little bit. So this is kind of an illustration of how interest rates work. So if you were to, so let's say you had like a piece of rope in your hand and you were to, and if the rope is six feet long and you were to wave it up and down like this, it would, it would go wildly because the, the longer the rope, the higher the fluctuations are. This is a very short piece of rope. And so even with very high changes in interest rates, it's not going to move around very much. So it's really constrained by math in that we know where, where these are going to mature, which is that par value. And anything that's held to maturity has, has that, has that interest rate risk eliminated completely because you're holding to maturity and, and you know what you're going to get at the end. Similar to on your bonds, you know, on the day you make the payment to retire the debt for the principal, that you know what amount is being paid on that day. And it's just the same thing, but you're an end user rather than an issuer of, of that debt.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Lori, had otherwise thoughts from the group?
I just wanted to point out too, when I, I asked about the tax exempt status on this too, because they were tax-exempt borrowing and he, as in Jim told me, that you can earn at tax exempt as well. So there's no tax penalties of any sort for these being tax exempt. It's basically as easy as they set up a portal for, for these transfers coming back and forth. So it, it sounds like a fairly easy transactions when we do need to do so.
Yes, the turnaround time is two days maximum and it's sent via ACH to your bank account at, at no cost.
Thank you. Jim, did you want to talk at all about the, the fee schedule?
Sure. Yes, it's, it's very straightforward. It is an at-will. So this agreement is at-will. You can, you can, there's no minimum, there's no minimum amount to pay. There's no minimum period of time. You can choose to discontinue the arrangement at any time. We hope you don't. We hope we earn your, earn your, earn our fee on this. It's a flat for this project, given that the proceeds that will be under management are less than five million dollars. It's a flat annualized rate of one-fourth of one percent or zero point two five percent. And that is billed monthly directly from the account. So the only things we can do in there is send you money, deduct our fee and transact in the account in the form of placing trades on your behalf. So pretty, in, in our estimation, certainly worth it. I'm biased, obviously, but if you look at returns versus cost, I think it's pretty compelling.
Gotcha. And your estimation on what that would be is, is up there in the sort of top paragraph, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct, correct. We're very transparent. And we are an SEC-regulated investment advisor and we are fiduciaries, which means that we have, we are legally obligated to act in your best interest at all times.
Right. Thank you.
So that's sort of the, the benefit of, again, all of this is, is just additional revenue, right? Using, you know, having our money work for us and to generate additional revenue. We had a conversation in personal finance about the desire to continue to regrow our reserves after, you know, capital spending and things of that nature, unexpected expenses over the years. And this would be one of the ways that, based on my conversations with Jim and Josh and Jim, you'll have to remember the other gentleman's name. I can't remember. Glenn, thank you.
Or Sean or Matt?
Yeah, one of them. You know, we sort of, I pressure tested this as best possible. We have a good relationship with others. I think mayors had similar, you know, experiences with this, these treasury notes and that it's been positive. So at this point, I would make a recommendation to move forward and capture this opportunity while it's in front of you based on everything sort of Jim is saying.
Can I, can I make a, or how, how much are we, are we just one million dollars? Is that the? Or is it? Four?
So the, the amount that's in you is, that's in front of you is, is basically a combination of what will be available to us by the end of June. So that I believe that is not only the, the funds from the debt proceeds, but also the township's money while we have it.
Okay.
And again, we're estimating our, our, our spend down of that through the pay request as best as we can.
Sure.
We have one in front of us tonight that is not two million dollars, right? So I can already tell you that the schedule is better or the reality is so far going to be better than what we forecasted here because instead of drawing two million dollars by June third, which is already passed, we're going to be spending less, you know, drawing less than a million by June eleventh, right?
And what, what are the terms on these treasury notes?
Jim, did you hear that question?
Yes, yes. So generally, the ones that, that we would purchase for, for this account, given the short-term nature of them, would be generally zero coupon US treasuries. So they don't actually pay interest. What they do is you would, what would happen is we would buy them on your behalf at a discount. So let's say we buy one at ninety-seven or nine hundred and seventy dollars per bond and it matures at a thousand or at a hundred or a thousand dollars per bond. And then the price just moves forward toward a hundred as it gets closer to maturity. So they really, they almost never show a loss in, as, as the life of the project goes until they get to maturity. So buying it at a discount and maturing at par value or a hundred cents on the dollar. We also can sell them early if needed, if needed, and, and very little interest rate risk as the time to maturity is incredibly short on all of these.
That answer your question, Steve?
Incredibly short is defined like how?
So like the longest position that we would, that we would buy, given, given this draw schedule would be probably maturing at the end of November. So less than six months. Treasury bonds are issued that go out to thirty years and this would be six months, less than six months. For the longest position.
Do you mind if I just ask a question about risk? Cause I do want to understand this.
Yeah.
So this is my basic understanding of risk is that risk is, is spread out over a long-term versus a short-term. So like looking at like a, a fluctuation can happen in a short time versus a long period of time. I'm wondering if you can explain that more. Just because over time, risk is modulated over like averages where the idea that the risk is less risky at a shorter time. I've never heard that concept before. So if you can help me with that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's a very good question. So if we were talking about stocks or equities or options, things like that, there are very large events that can, that can, you know, really, if you look at a financial crisis or something like that, over a longer period of time, your averages in the market would be, you know, kind of smoothed out. Even, even though, you know, you might look at your account and not be very happy. This is kind of, so the way I think about it is, is stock investors are optimists and they wonder what could, what could go right and have my stock increase in value. Fixed income investors are pessimists and, and they would think about what could possibly go wrong where I can't get my money back. Or the, the borrower would default on a loan. In this case, the borrower is the federal government in the United States of America and if they didn't pay their obligations, stocks are at zero. And, you know, where your, your, any money in a bank account is worth zero. And that's really kind of the reality of, it doesn't get safer than these investments. And, and the amount of time that you're bar, that you're loaning money out is, is shorter. And so there's, there's less, less risk associated over time because the risk is that you're not going to get paid back for the money that's been, been loaned out. Does that make sense? Was that too long of an answer?
No, Jim, thank you. That was, I think that was helpful.
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions? So we're looking to approve a resolution authorizing this to go ahead.
This is John. I would move that we authorize this transaction.
Todd, I second it.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Todd Faith?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mark Kirkie?
Aye.
And Emma?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thanks, Jim.
Even. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, which is discussion with possible action on resolution authorizing submission of CDI grant application to WIDEC for the Verona Welcome Center project.
I think I'll stay seated for once. Just to refresh your memory, in November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the council made the motion to allow the Historic Preservation Commission to apply for the CDI grant and allocated two hundred thousand dollars in funding from the TID six as additional matching fund for the bathhouse project. In order for us to apply for the CDI grant, we first had to raise the matching funds of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And due to the hard work of the task force and our many generous donors, we have been able to raise two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. I'm excited to report. So the next step is to, well, part of the CDI application is a resolution from the city of Roca authorizing the submission of the application. And that's what we're looking for tonight. I think that Nate wanted to talk about some of the budget numbers. Is that correct?
Yeah, Cindy, while I'm pulling it up, did you, you had sent me a file with a updated bathhouse plan. I, I didn't know that.
Floor plan?
The floor plan. I don't know if that was for tonight or just for in general.
If it was needed, but.
Sure.
Yeah. It's, all he did was put the, correct the names on it. So the names of the rooms.
So I'll just put this up there on the screen because this is part of what, you know, articulates what Cindy had said in terms of the arrangement. And this is in a format that the CDI folks use at WIDEC. So essentially, and you'll have to hang tight here. So this is the expense side just showing, and it's sort of an interesting format. The project is estimated to be about a little over half a million for the actual construction portion. And then all other items regarding professional fees, contingency amounts, we've got some costs in there for interim financing and some of the other categories you're, you're used to seeing on building projects are all sort of put in these different categories based on how they'd like to see it for a total project cost of around seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Okay. And this is the CDI eligible portion. And then what Cindy did a great job of explaining just here and I'll zoom in for those is that this was the sort of arrangement, right? The WIDEC grant that they're pursuing is this, or I should say the CDI grant through WIDEC, WIDEC is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city is putting up these matching funds and then as Cindy said, there's, and I, I think I must be plus or minus a thousand on this, Cindy, it was around two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, we're up to two fifty-eight now.
Okay, even better. So this is generally where they're at, plus or minus three, or plus three thousand dollars on the donations side. Okay. So part of what you would be giving authorizing to do, what you would be authorizing to do per the resolution is to move forward with this model of financing. Okay? Fair enough. Okay. One of the things that we always want to do is just make sure before we sort of start pulling triggers on projects as we look at the funding sources that the city holds, a way of sort of revisiting our plan from capital improvement projects. So this is the TID six projections. I know you can't see all these numbers, but what I'll articulate there is that Ellers put this together, again, same folks we just talked to where they're our fiduciary agent. They help us make wise financial decisions. They keep an eye on our TIDS and make sure that all the costs and expenses, obligations and revenues that we have are articulated so we can make good decisions. And again, you're not expected to see all these numbers, but all the different colors represent different projects. So you got the Hotel Fortney, the revenue that's coming in from the additional taxes they created by that project are in there on one side. The expenses going out to them in terms of the grants that we offer to them and that we agreed upon for them to do the project are available to help them pay off construction loans. And again, that's in essence how TIDS work, right? The North Point project is in there. The, this brown color here and again, is The North Point project is in there. The this brown color here and again is for the recent loan. The portion of the loan we just did to pay for the tap project, the Main Street and Decker corrections. You know, tearing down of Old City Hall, things like that. So that's all in there. And then you see here the bathhouse, that number that Cindy just spoke of. So we'll zoom in real close here and we'll see what does it all mean at the end of the day if you were to approve this. And this is the cumulative cash balance on the TID. And so you can see that the TID is hovering right around to, you know, quarter million dollars for the future years. And then as every year, more money is put into the account, more money is put into the account. And by the end of the TID, you have about two million dollars in there. Now, what's not shown is here is any future projects that we have yet to approve minus the bathhouse. Because that one's inserted as the point of discussion. So things like Ackert Park, Center Street, I believe it was. Southwest Avenue, I can't remember exactly which one was on the list down here somewhere. Those aren't in here yet. So obviously, there there's catch for us to do future projects. But we have to remember there's, you know, fifteen, twenty years that we're looking at down the road here. That we're gonna, every five years, we're doing more and more projects that are going to tap into the TID. The other thing that's important to note here is that in previous iterations of this debt forecast, the TID has been shown as much stronger. And if everybody remembers, especially those who are on finance today. There was an issue with allocation of balances between TID six and the general fund. Our auditors had incorrectly. Apply or not moved revenues that were supposed to be allocated to TID six for the park project, the Park Bowl projects many years ago. And it had been sitting in the general fund. So what or had been sitting in. Help me out. They hadn't allocated the expenses appropriately. So what what that meant is that the TID six looked really good and the general fund looked really bad and they were inaccurate. So they had a, this year in two thousand twenty three, they swapped the money and we've come to a point where, okay, the money is accurately portrayed. Between the two different funds, okay? And so what you would have seen before is over five hundred thousand dollars more in the cash balance for TID six. Okay, and that has since been corrected. So over the last two years, essentially, we've been dealing with is feeling like our TID six. Our TID six balance is a lot better than what it actually is. Okay, so just wanted to point that out because that's updated information, everybody based on the audit work that Lori and I had done with Johnson and Block as well as Ellers.
But you did say that although it's not as good as it was, it's still good, our TID six.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a couple of things I'll say regarding this project. One is is that, yes, TID six can still afford this project and that's shown on there by the fact that there's accumulated balance available. Still available even after the two hundred and thirty eight comes out, right? The other thing I'll say is is that I don't think that this project gets done cheaper. When we were looking at many other opportunities early on in the project, maybe it was, you know. And again, I know the historic preservation and the task force people don't want to hear the words tear down. But if we were to tear down and build something up new of a similar size, it was not going to cost two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars, right? Given the fact that that building is a historic landmark for the city of Oroko, whatever we do moving forward needs to come with the blessing of the Historic Preservation. Commission who would have to write a certificate of appropriateness on it. I think you're in the position here where you can turn that building from a dilapidated ice store. Into something at a price that is leveraged against both other public outside funds in the CDI grant. And a significant amount of private investment in it as the way of. Donations and 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 whatnot. So again, from a holistic point of view, that's how I'm looking at it. Again, my only concern about the TID is that we're tapping into it more than what we had wanted to. When we did the capital improvement plan, okay? And that needs to be stated, but I still think as with the fire station, same case with the fire station. It's never going to get done cheaper.
Are there any other projects that have reached out to inquire about the CDI grant? Because I know we can only do one per year.
Correct. At this point, no.
And July first is the beginning of the fiscal year for the CDI grant. So we're hoping to get the resolution tonight so we can be ready as soon as possible after July first to put in the application.
I I think there was some certain criteria that had to be met to get this grant. And does this project meet all that criteria? I think employment is one of the criteria that was mentioned and. Certain increase in values and I can't remember what some of the other ones were. But does this meet all or whatever criteria it needs to meet?
Yes.
So and I don't know if you want to bring this up, Cindy, but what the HBC had put forward was is what's called a. Was a pre-application. The, you know, they get this, the WIDEC folks get a number of these a year and so they ask for a pre-application. And that doesn't need a resolution for the group to be able to send that. And so I think WIDEC was in the process of screening that right now to make sure it's a eligible and worthwhile project to pursue forward. Before that, you know, time is invested. And so I think Cindy was going to encourage. If there was a motion made to approve this resolution, you would note that it's contingent on the pre-screening going successfully. And that would sort of, I think, answer your question, Todd.
They meet next week. They were supposed to meet today. So that's why we had it on the agenda for tonight. But we didn't want to wait till the end of the month to have it on the agenda because like I said, we really want to have this thing ready to go. By July first or soon thereafter. So and we have an architect ready to go. So Mark Setler, who is the preservation architect.
The only, the only other thing that would give me pause, and again, I bring this up just so that the group is aware and can have. As much information as possible and make a decision on this is that one of my concerns, and I've always expressed this, Cindy, is operating costs, right? We know how expensive it is to heat and cool and keep lights on and those costs aren't going down. We, as Cindy had, I think noted before, have had really strong conversations with the chamber. It's still the chamber's intent to pursue. An agreement where they would be an anchor tenant for this building, but that commitment has not been made, right? We haven't signed any leases. There there's no been no full thing. So you're at a point here where you're moving forward with this. But you don't yet, haven't locked up the tenant who will ensure that operating costs are covered going forward. And again, that would be an ongoing cost for the city.
Want to add that Ethos wants to donate solar panels, which would pay for the electrical cost, operating costs. And with sixteen inch outer walls, I would think that it would be pretty energy efficient building and it's not that big a building either.
Sure. And we we've run cost estimations on, you know, forecasted as best we can on what the building is. And I think Cindy's right, it's not going to take a ton of money, but we all know. Especially those on the budget team, how much we have to scrap for every ten thousand dollars in order to make. A department run better on behalf of the citizens. And so it's just, again, be mindful of that, that they're still in process with that.
Right, well, I see how that's boarded properly. I'll make the the motion that we. Take action on the resolution authorizing the submission of the CDI grant application to WIDEC for the Broco Welcome Center. Based on the pre-screening coming back. Correct.
Contingent on that, yeah.
Yeah.
This is Chris.
This is AJ. I'll second it.
Any other questions? No, not, you can just do a voice vote for that, right? All right, if not, all those in favor, say aye. Post. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item number eight, operators license approvals.
The list that you had in your packet went before public safety this evening. These are pending all background checks. So if you were to approve these, we would need that contingency on there pending the background checks. But these are the the last hopeful wave of these coming through. So they did forward it with their approval with that contingency on it.
Just thought I'd move to approve the operator licenses pending the background checks.
Cindy, I'll second.
Again, motion a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Post. All right, item number nine, review and approval of liquor license renewals for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five license year.
Okay, the Walgreens, the Temple Theater, twelve twelve LLC is maybe lately's Pacifico and the VFW. These are the second round of the ones that you didn't get to at the last council meeting. I still have a couple more coming that still need to get their stuff in there. But we're getting running down to the fifteen day window that some of them may not make that June thirtieth deadline. So these are the ones that have their paperwork in. There was an agent change at Walgreens and at the VFW. But this went before public safety and they did forward it with their approval.
I'll make a motion we approve the liquor license renewals for twenty four, twenty five license year.
Get a motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Post. All right, item number ten, discussion with possible action on water rate increase.
Hey, folks, we'll just give a second. Sarah Granger and Cheryl are going to jump up here and I think Sarah's going to share screen.
So while Sarah's trying to or loading up the spreadsheet here, I'm just gonna start. I feel like I'm talking really loud. Okay. So there's a couple new faces, Emma, I think. I am Cheryl Purvis. I am the utility clerk for the water and sewer, part of the municipality. Since two thousand eighteen, the water utility has done three simplified rate cases or SRCs. In two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty one, and the last one was January first, two thousand twenty three. Unlike the sewer utility, the Public Service Commission or the PSC regulates the water utility. An SRC is a simple application that uses the annual report submitted to the PSC. To move over a tad and I can't read that way, sorry. So. An SRC is a simple application that uses the annual report submitted to the PSC. And looks at the water revenue, less operation and maintenance expenses and depreciation. Takes, it takes little time for me to re to prepare and will cost approximately six hundred dollars. Biling and SRC is a way for utilities to do an inflationary increase. So customers benefit from smaller, more frequent increases and may be able to absorb more easily into their family budget. Rather than doing an increase through a conventional rate case. By doing the last three smaller inflationary increases, we were able to absorb ninety eight thousand dollars in unplanned well expenses. Over the past two and a half years while still maintaining a positive cash flow and have increased our rate of return. The PSC sets the rate of return or ROR annually for all utilities. The PSC looks at the cost of doing business and inflation for the past twelve months and sets target rates. For the utility to be able to sufficiently run operations and maintain their assets. For two thousand twenty four, the PSC has set the target ROR at six point five percent. Broco Utilities, the Water Utility Rate of Return for two thousand twenty three was three point four percent. The PSC also sets the rate increase utilities will receive through an SRC application. This rate is lower than the target ROR, but it is meant to keep the increase as low as possible for our customers. While giving the utility the ability to maintain their cash flow to cover inflation. For two thousand twenty four, the increase the PSC has set is four point one percent. I do want you to understand, however, that doing an SRC rate increase does not necessarily mean. That we would not have to do a conventional rate increase in the future. If we had large construction projects such as the new well, a new tower or a large water main project, this may require a full conventional rate case. However, by doing these regular SRCs, this helps cushion the large rate increase. For example, instead of a twenty five percent conventional rate increase, the utility may need to only do a ten percent increase. Again, that's only an example. I don't want you to hold that to me. So looking at the spreadsheet, as you can see. Our current rate, base rate for residential. Excuse me, residential is eight dollars and ten cents per month and our proposed new rate is eight dollars and forty three cents. So a base rate would only go up thirty three cents. If we looked at the average usage. One hundred cubic feet of water is four point, excuse me, four dollars and sixteen cents. And the proposed rate is four dollars and thirty three cents or seventeen cents per month. A two person average household goes through three hundred cubic feet of water, which would be a twelve dollar and forty eight cent monthly rate. That would increase to twelve dollars and ninety nine cents or fifty one cents a month. And if we skip down to industrial, two thousand six hundred cubic feet is the average industrial industrial use per month. Current rate would be one hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents. It would go up to one hundred twelve dollars and fifty nine cents or four dollars and forty three cents. As we look farther, a little down on the spreadsheet here. I did compare our largest customers in each class under the proposed four point one percent increase. Vernon Memorial Hospital would have an increase of twenty four dollars and eighty four cents. Nelson Global Products, twenty two dollars and forty three cents. Vernon Parks would be fifteen dollars and sixty one cents and Vernon Manor would be twenty two dollars and fourteen cents. So what we've done in the past with both water and sewer is we compare the same ten surrounding communities. And the current rate system out of the ten, we are the third highest. However, I do want to note you to note that there are three of the ten. Going through a full conventional rate case at the moment. And there are two that have negative rate of returns. And then there is one that only has a one percent return. So if we took the same schedule next year under our current rates. We would see ourselves at the middle or lower end of this and I would be very surprised if we were not. Full rate cases again usually result in double digit increases. So under the proposed four point one percent interest rate and the next scheduled down from here. We would still be number three. So we would only have an increase of from the proposed to the current of eighty four cents. So. At this point in time, we do the budget. The impact on the budget. And I did note that at the top I do have an error because originally I had prepared this for. Bringing forward to you a few months ago, but the PSC just released the rates. Two months ago and then there's certain deadlines you have to meet. So instead of June through December, it really should say September through December. And then in twenty five, it would be the full year instead of June through December, it would be January through December. So if you look at the impact, doing the four point one percent increase for the remaining of this year, starting in September. We would have a thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollar, little farther down on the spreadsheet. There we go, thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollar that increased in revenue. We did adjust a little farther down. We did adjust our expenditures slightly over our proposed, excuse me, our original budget. I did natural the expenditures for simplicity because we're not increasing expenses, I need just the revenue. So our net effect would be nine thousand seventy seven dollars increase for the last three months. And then if you look at the twenty five projected budget, we would have a forty eight thousand dollar impact of revenue. And with that being said, I would just like to know if you have any questions or have any comments, need me to explain anything further?
Cheryl, when would this go into effect?
September first.
Looking at what some of the other cities have had to go through when they didn't do something like this, it's really this, oh, my gosh, we've got to keep on this. Or, you know, for eighty, what, dollar for a family of four is a dollar two. you know, for $80 for a family of four is a dollar two rate increase. So per month.
By doing these, by doing these smaller increases more frequently, it really does help. Well, if there are no more questions, I would just like to um have the council move forward if they choose to approve the 4.1% increase.
Thank you. Questions? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Cindy, I make the motion we approve the 4.1% wa- water rate increase.
This title second it.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Just that I'm sorry, we have to increase the rates, but this is a wiser time to do it than to wait.
Yeah. Yep, anything else? Roll call please.
Cindy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Todd Kirkman?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
And Todd Spade?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item 11, review and uh, an approval of reimbursement resolution for Center Street Project and Safe Drinking Water Loan.
All right, I gotta get used to driving the computer and talking here. So give me one second just to get this to the right spot. Okay, so we've talked a little bit about um, a future Center Street project potentially in 2025, so next year. And when I say Center Street project, it's very similar to when we did our Rock Avenue project. Uh oh, I'm saying it, aren't I? Center Avenue, sorry. Depends on how you hear it and learn the the road names, um, where we did Rock Avenue, but we also did the side streets in the downtown. So what we really mean when we see Center Street is the Center Street, I did it again, Center Avenue and then Jefferson Courts, Tarhoon Side Streets. Um, and so we're uh, ab- um, we're working really hard trying to get grant money to do this project, right? Because we want to make sure we can optimize and minimize our borrowing. Um, and so we've been successful so far. We got um, $932,000 from the DOT, which really helps us with our road surface costs. Um, and so the, we also have a um, application in for appropriations money, which we've been moved to sort of like the second round. We'll see how that goes. This is another one of the things that we're looking at is trying to get the DNR funding for the safe drinking water and the clean water loan program. And their low interest um, loan rates, but on top of that, they can also possibly add principal forgiveness, which is essentially their way of saying a grant. And in order to make the application, we have to have this reimbursement resolution in place. So essentially, this is not approving going ahead with the project. It is helping us put the application in. And so um, you know, we do this and we have done this previously in our um, as a reimbursement resolution in our previous DNR applications and it's essentially an IRS thing. Um, and so we have here, uh, I was trying to incorporate both the possible expenses on a safe drinking water, which is the water side and a clean water, which is the sewer side at 2.5 million is the possible reimbursement. So again, this is the resolution. It would go in our application and it would be used later if we were able to get the loan or principal forgiveness funding.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions for, sorry Cindy.
I was gonna make a motion, we approve the reimbursement resolution for Center Avenue project, Safe Drinking Water Loan.
Hey.
This is on my second motion.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Item number 12, discussion with possible action to approve the 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report and Resolution.
Uh, so I, uh, you guys are in for a real treat tonight. You get to hear me talk for hopefully not too long. But we also want to make sure that you understand what we're looking at. So if I get to the right page here. Um, okay, so we're looking at, oh, that's still not what I want to say. Hmm. Let's try it this way. There we go. Okay, so every year we have to submit to the um, Department of Natural Resources. Basically this like summary report of the condition of our sewer system. And when I say sewer system, I'm talking about the collection system, but also the wastewater treatment plant and the financials as well are all um, encompassed in it. And I will, again, try to be brief. If you ever want me to stop and explain something, please let me know. I have gone through this with the Public Works Committee, which is where I try to provide more detail. Um, so essentially the first sections are about our picks. Let's try that again, plant capacity. So do we have enough capacity in the plant to take the flows and the loadings, like the strength of the waste um, at our wastewater plant? And we have zero points, which is sounds counterintuitive, but we want zero points in this section. So this means we are meeting all of our needs and we are roughly about half of where we could be. So that's always good. That's good for growth, right? We want to make sure we have capacity. Um, we do take septicage and holding um, tank waste. And generally that's the only holding or hauled waste we take, but um, we have holding tanks that um, allow us to do, to take outside waste. Um, and then the next part is the quality of our effluent. And so essentially we have a number of different parameters that we need to meet. Ones we uh, test for repeatedly throughout the year, three times a week, we take samples or the composite sample. So it means it for 24 hours, we take a little bit of sample. And then um, we're testing them for how well we're doing for treatment. Some of the big ones are the organic loading, so we call it BOD. And this um, section shows we met all of our limits for our BOD and and this is for 2023, just as a note. Um, and we uh, like I said, going, I think I, well, no, no, I didn't, I didn't skip that part. Okay, the next part is total suspended solids. And so this is the one part where we have a not perfect score sadly to say. So in April, we ended up having our sampler tube slip down into a section that had so- a lot of sediment in it. And that one single sample out of the 12 we take was enough to get our average over um, our permit limit for that month. So that's why you see a one there. Um, we explained the situation to the DNR. They understand, but it still puts us at a 10 points instead of a zero points. And oops, so then we do, they give us like a grade average and and that average, now we got a B, unfortunately. We like to say, see straight A's. Um, another big one in our plant is ammonia and with ammonia, the big thing with ammonia is that it is toxic in the environment. So we want to make sure that for uh, the aquatic environment, our ammonia is as low as possible. And we have a permit limit for that. And again, we've got zero points, which is, means that we did our job. Phosphorus, phosphorus is like the instigator that required us to do a lot of upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant because we remove it by means of biological treatment as we do with the phosphorus and the carbon. But this one's the tricky one and a lot of plants in the area well, all over the state and the nation have had to deal with some serious reductions and phosphorus limits. For example, we went from one milligrams per liter to 0.14, which once you get down that far in a removal percentage, your cost just goes up astronomically trying to get down to those little um, you know, every milligram, 0.1 milligram per liter is super significant. But we did a good job. Um, and that's uh, goes a lot to saying how well our operator is operating the plant and then also just that our upgrades like really did help us a lot in order to be able to control the plant better. Okay, so we talked a lot about our effluent, which is what goes out into the water body that's adjacent to the wastewater plant. Actually, we discharge in that same water body, but closer to Springville now. So we have the basically liquid side and then we have the solid side. So that we had, we split that through the plant. And the solids, we end up a land applying um, on a semi-annual basis, so twice a year. And um, we have a cooperative agreement with the adjacent landowners, some farmers and we, they use it as fertilizer and we are able to have a place to put our sludge. And we meet all the limits that we have. Um, I can get into more detail. Some of them are lifetime limits. Some of them are just assuming that the crop will uptake a certain amount of nu- nutrients and then we can apply. And again, we did well in that section with zero points. The next talks about staffing. So um, with Brock Isert as our wastewater operator, we still ended up having a, um, he just got his fully, full licensing for our wastewater plant. We needed advanced operator. Um, and so we use Greg Paul, who was a consultant to be the operator in charge. Um, and it was a, I would say a really awesome arrangement for us. He was exceptionally helpful and exceptionally economical, but then Brock was doing so many things and he actually came and visited us today and said how impressed he was, how um, much Brock had advanced in his understanding of the treatment process. So it's always good to hear from someone who really knows what they're talking about. Um, and so the other parts of this is us just being able to have enough staff at at the wastewater plant and that we're um, having a like detailed operation and maintenance plan. So we have a computer program that tells us when um, all our filters or oil needs to be changed. If you've ever been down to the wastewater plant, what will there be is a lot of equipment. There is a ton of operations that we have to take um, responsibility for down there. Oh, and here's the operator in charge part. I kind of skipped ahead and like I said, we have an advanced treatment plant. And all of these are looking really good and we're moving on to the section that Cheryl is gonna jump in for a little bit. Are you planning on jumping in? I know I didn't ask you that before we started.
Okay, so I just have a very small part of this uh, large report, but basically this is just making sure this section that we have adequate revenues to cover our expenses and that we have adequate funding in our replacement account. That um, we are required by our permit to have an asset replacement account equal to 10% of our value of replacing the equipment. So right now, I'm not sure.
Should do that, yeah.
It is making it hard for me.
Oh, it's double.
Oh, okay. So uh, right now, last year's ending balance was 760, I should say, the ending balance, beginning balance of this year was 764,088. During the year, we contributed 129,734.99 to this fund. We are required to put $90,400 in every year and we made $39,335 in interest. So that made the 129. Our ending balance as of December 31st was 893,823 and 11 cents. The amount that should be in the replacement account is 815, 801,515. That's not what actually should be, but that is the minimum that's required at this point in time. So we're doing well. Interest has been helping us. Uh, I think that's it, my small part.
Trying to keep it, keep it brief. Okay, so um, they always in the financial section ask us to talk about future projects and we can talk about this later, but I will say that when you're operating in um, infrastructure management, there is never an end to projects. And particularly for us, I would say we are at least a decade, if not more behind where ideally we want to be in terms of replacing equipment and things like that. So you know, we're not a one and done kind of building type of situation. We're just continually having projects. So always something to note. Um, so another part in the financial section looks at energy efficiency and um, that was one of the things we talked with Greg Paul about today because we actually uh, we use electricity and we also use natural gas. Our natural gas is offset by the gases we create in our treatment process. Um, but our electricity total usage went up about 10% last year. And that's all attributed to how much our blowers are running. They are by far the highest energy consumers in the wastewater plant. And we did make significant energy improvements when we put these new blowers in in 2017. Um, but we've been trying to make our treatment process work even better because we know we're gonna have future limits for nitrogen that are low. And so we've been working on this. So today, what we talked about was trying to figure out how to find the best balance. So what this does, what we've been doing has allowed us some more buffer with treatment so that we're not having high ammonias and looking forward to our nitrogen level that we're gonna get in the future. But do we need to go this far and use that much electricity? So we're working on trying to find a happy balance there. And uh, Greg Paul had said that there's actually in the biological treatment world, we're like selectively trying to cultivate certain microorganisms to do certain things. And we can actually cultivate ones that will do two jobs at once. So that's what we're gonna be working on in the next little bit and which would mean that we would have less um, oxygen that would need to go in the system, which is those blowers. And those are the kinds of things I get excited about. So, oh boy. Okay, um, moving on. Are we at our summary yet? Oh no, not at all. We've got our biggest, most important part besides treatment is our collection system. And if you've ever heard me talk about a collection system before, I always talk about the clear flow that comes into the system that we don't want in the system because what happens is the more clear flow we get, the bigger we have to build for like four times a year, three times a year, maybe one time a year. We have to double or triple the size of the system, which doesn't make economic sense, right? So we're working really hard to eliminate our INI flows.
Sarah, pardon me, but does everybody know what she's talking about? With this, it's just like rainwater?
Yeah.
It's getting into the system?
It's amazing how much rainwater we get and it, it's detrimental because we don't need to treat rainwater, right? It's only being treated because it's mixing in with our sewer. Um, the one thing I will be very happy to report is that we've had a history of trying to having sanitary sewer overflows to try to relieve a situation where basement backups might happen. There was not very much rain last year, so that also helped, but um, we didn't have any of that happen last year, which is great. That's our goal. We don't want to see anything. Um, and we're doing all the good stuff with lining and cleaning the sewer. The guys do an absolutely great job of keeping the sewer clean. I think we do more work there than a lot of communities. And that was like, you look, if you look at the annual average particip- precipitation for last year was at 26 inches, whereas the year, like our annual average is 38. So you can see that we didn't have as much rain as we normally do. And you can see that in the end here because these numbers at the very end, this peaking factor, that means like how much more than normal we're getting. And I have seen this number up to like 15 and it was at six this year. So that's great. We're doing things in the system, but we also, we'll see how it turns out this year with more rain. I think that's it. It is. Okay, so as you saw through all of this, we got an almost straight A. Average, we had that one sample upset. Um, and I will say, you know, one of the things that contributed to the understanding with the DNR is that like the next sample was at our normal rain again, range again. So it's not like we kind of went off and had problems. We were just, it was like a bad sample. So if you have any questions, um, happy to answer. I love talking about this stuff, but otherwise that's what you need to know about your wastewater system.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes.
Any questions? Now we need to see, approve the annual report?
Yeah, we need to approve a resolution because the DNR wants to make sure that you guys have seen this information. Um, so here is the resolution that also came forward from Public Works.
Thank you.
This is Crystal. And I'll move approval of the 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report um, for uh, and resolution.
I'll second it. So John?
Got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Thank you. Uh, item number 13, review and approval of 2023 Consumer Confidence Report.
So this is what I meant about, you get to hear me for a lot tonight. Uh, so Consumer Con- Confidence Report. We just talked about sewer. Now we're talking about water. Um, water, this uh, document, uh, it's required nationwide. And nationwide, they basically agreed that it's not really easy to read. It's unfortunate, right? Because this is supposed to be giving information to the public, but it's not in a great format. So hopefully. So hopefully in the next little bit, you'll see the new versions coming forward. But essentially, anything that is measurable in our water is going to be in this report, which is something I like and don't like because the things that we don't have in our water, like PFOS, it's not even up here. You don't even see it because we don't have anything detected, which is a pretty big deal. But unfortunately, they just focus on what we have. So I think that's something good to note. So this first part, I mean, it talks about how to contact information about contact, who to contact if you want information about your water system. And then if you wanted to talk to somebody in the Public Works or Council when our meetings are. And that we have three sources, right? We have three wells that we use in our water system. And it talks about how, so anything that's in the water, they consider a contaminant, which I also feel like is very misleading because it always sounds like it's coming from like a human outside source that's not supposed to be there. And in certainly some cases, that's true, not in our water, but in, you know, other people's systems. However, a lot of this stuff is just because our rock formations, our aquifers just have them naturally occurring. And they go on to talk about all this, these acronyms that you might be able to see. This is how easy it is to read. But the really big things that I would take out of this is you've got your MCL numbers, which is your maximum contaminant level. So when you hear someone say a limit, usually they're talking about that MCL. And the other one, which is a big one, is the MCLG. So it means the goal. So the water industry and regulars realize that like in an ideal world, we'd have the perfect water quality. But sometimes it's just like not obtainable to get to certain parameters because of, we can talk a little bit more about that as we come up. So it's the goal. So like lead, for example, they have an action level, but the goal is zero. We don't want any lead in water, right? So those, that's when you would see a goal. And there's a whole bunch of units, but I'm not going to get too far into it. So we have different parts of the system in which we test certain things. So disinfection products are a result of us chlorinating. And we chlorinate to keep the microbial quality of the water safe for people to drink. We don't test this at the well because we don't, in the raw water well, if there's no chlorine, right? We're testing this in the far ends of the distribution system, which means it's like, we're always testing for the worst case scenario. So the far ends that have the most contact with chlorine, that's where we're sampling this. And the two main parameters that are being tested, they're coupled together, even though I mentioned that when we have zero, we don't necessarily have it. It's because they're kind of considered like partnering parameters, I guess. So halocetic acids, we're in good shape there. There's a zero level found in our system. Try, total trihalomethanes, the limit is 80, the goal is zero, and we have 1.3 in our system. Which I still think is awesome because when I was in Canada doing this, our numbers were not nearly that low on most systems. So then the next is what they call inorganic contaminants. It's like a grouping where they say, oh, everything else is here. And so anything that's measured in the water is in this category. And so notably, like these are all parameters that are coming from our, like our aquifer structure. So there's like the range for arsenic, so that's 10, but it shows zero to one. It means that it's tested actually at the wells. And because we have three wells, one of the three wells had a one. The other two had a zero, so that's why it shows a range. And then like things like fluoride. So we do not add fluoride to our water. That's really important to note. However, it's naturally occurring in the formation and so we have point one. Again, it's something important and I don't ever want to have to start adding fluoride because it is more complicated than our value for, I think, at least in terms of what we're doing. Happy to answer any questions about them, but these are all things that we just have in our system. So another big area, and again, those are all at the well. So that's like what we get from the source. Another big area of testing is our lead and copper. And lead and copper rule came in like 90s and they really started pushing it. And they've like evolved all of these requirements over time. And obviously with Flint, Michigan, that just like catapulted this concern forward, which is great. And we're doing a lot of work in this area, but these samples, it's not coming from our well. It's coming from the system, the distribution system and the pipes in people's homes. And so when we sample for this, we're actually sampling at the tap of someone's property, right? We're not sampling at a hydrant near there or at the well. We're doing this in a person's home. And we're again, looking for the absolute worst case scenario. So there's different tiers where we can test and we're, I believe it's the second tier. So we don't have lead services in the city, but we have people that have copper pipe that have lead solder. And so those are the folks we're looking at trying to find and test their water. And we test 20 samples every three years. And so here's the result. So the AL is kind of like a limit, but it's actually called an action level. And so with copper, not as concerning for me. We have a limit or a goal, excuse me, an action level of 13, a goal of 1.3. And then it's a, they're just trying to make it really confusing, 90th percentile. So we rank all those 20 and we pick which one is at 18 and that's the number that gets put in there. But copper is something that you can have a little bit of in your diet and it's, it's actually beneficial. Lead, on the other hand, like I mentioned before, is zero. We don't want to see any. And again, the ones that we found were, had copper pipe with lead solder in them. And there was four in total that we had that weren't zero or what they call non-detect because we can't always test, like how far can you test down to? And all of the properties were contacted immediately and they knew and some reacted very concerned and others were not at all worried about it. And so it just kind of depends on the property owner, but everybody's notified and we can always test for you. So like if you've had somebody, sorry, Cindy, I see, see your hand. If you have somebody who's concerned about lead, we will go out and test their, their tap.
Yeah. Is the problem with copper, just the lead fittings you said? Is it the copper pipe itself?
So the copper levels are coming from the copper in the pipe. And so a factor of what comes out of whatever piping material you have often is like the corrosivity of the water itself. And it's also about like length of time that the water is sitting in the pipe will, is a factor in what you're seeing here. And so the copper's just not hitting levels that are concerning, but in some places it would be. If there was a highly corrosive water, you'd have a much higher copper level.
So you recommend people get the plastic instead of the copper?
Good question. Not necessarily. I think any material will leach into the water to a certain extent. And I, what's really promoted, well, one, you always want lead out. So like that's a no brainer. Copper, plastic, which they'll often call poly pipe. It's certainly the way to go. It's a lot about like that first flush. So when we sample, we have the water sitting in the pipe overnight. We're not allowed to take, like run the water and then take the sample. And so it really encouraged that first time in the day to run your water, generally till it's cold. If you're planning on drinking it, if you're just using it to wash up or whatever, not something to be concerned about. But you really do want to run your water before you use it. If it's the first thing in the morning or you've gone on vacation, that's another big one. You're away for three weeks and come back. It's always good to run your water when you get home.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you already do this, but just out of curiosity, just because children are so vulnerable with lead. Are households that have children under five and things like that, are they notified of risks or have any follow-up testing for their children if they do come up with higher levels?
Yeah, we contact every property if it's not a non-detect and go through all of the protocols with them and explain what, what we're realizing or what we think is the cause of it in the system. And we do have information on our website as well. I have been contacted over time from people who just have high lead from children exposure to, you know, whatever. And they're trying to figure out why. You know, often it's like paint in the home or a toy or something like that. So the information is available and we certainly contact anyone we think. And again, these are, we always like try to seek out the people who we think have the highest risk of having it in their system. Yeah. Okay, so that's a big one. And you'll hear more about our lead service line inventory. So work, we're going to try to get this taken care of at any level in the city. The last big one is radioactive contaminants, which is again, it's a part of what is in our wells. And these are tested at the well. And the one that we've been really monitoring closely is the rate, it was called combined radium. It's the second line there and it's like 226 and 228. So it's a different isotopes of radium. And you add the two together, the maximum level is five, your goal is zero. And we have a range of 3.3 to 3.7. And actually that 3.7 number was, well, six, which was recently sampled and I believe it was 3.4. So we're getting, we're, we're getting better or at least staying in that level. We work really hard to maintain our wells. What we found is if we have the natural bacteria in the well gets over excited, we see those levels go up. And so when you hear about some things that we've had with the wells are just like pumps breaking down. But sometimes we're talking about treating the well and that is specifically why we're looking at treating the well. We are not mandated to treat it if unless it's five, but we certainly always have that choice. It is not coming free, right? So it's definitely a cost benefit analysis. Something like radium does not come out with your Brita filters or your carbon filters, which I absolutely love. But it does come out with your water softener. So, but most people aren't drinking their softened water. So it's always something food for thought, but again, certainly comes with a large price take. And that is about it. If this is that last section talks about lead in water, as we mentioned, the first flushing and like things like you can't boil your water to get rid of lead. You boil your water if you're concerned about microbial quality, which we're always monitoring every week, multiple times a week in Brokwa, so. So there's your consumer confidence report. Happy to answer any questions. This is made available to the public and Cheryl does a great job of sending it out to any non-residential entity, customer. People can come in the office, like I said, it'll be on the website as well.
How long does it take you to fill that thing out?
It does it for us.
Oh, really?
Because every single water sample we take is recorded by the DNR and it's publicly available. So you can go to the DNR website and see every single test we take, every back T sample, which is plentiful, all that stuff is on the DNR website. And so we just create this and it populates it for the most part.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Other questions? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve this report.
Cindy, I make a motion to approve the 2023 Consumer Confidence Report.
This is Crystal, I'll second.
You got a motion to second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Sorry, sorry, AJ. I assume that was on a four, so.
Yes, that was four.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number 14, discussion with possible action on RFP for licensed childcare provider for North Point Project.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and just switch back to my screen here and I can put up the draft for everybody to look at. So I was working on this today. So if anybody wonders why you haven't seen it is because just finished this draft at around four o'clock. So my apologies, you didn't get a chance to look at it sooner, but it's a three-page document. It's fairly, fairly simple. And generally what I'm looking for today is not approval of the final product, but more of a approval of the approach. So just to sort of remind everybody, what we're looking at here is the North Point Project Main Street Apartments that was approved some months ago. You can see the earthworks or I should say the demo that's happening out there and earthworks about to start if they haven't began initially already. Part of that project will include a 6,000 square foot daycare facility, which the city will work on finding a licensed childcare provider to move in. And then they would go ahead and sign a lease of a to be discussed timeframe directly with North Point. And then they would take on sort of all the costs associated with it. Again, dollar for rent and then they would pay for their own way for utilities and maintenance. And then they would pay a portion, a small portion of other costs such as payment of annual taxes, insurance and some other costs related to parking lot upkeep, salt, sand, restriping, things like that. So that's sort of the elevator speech on, on this part of the project. So this RFP that is in front of you today, I sort of went through and just tried to highlight it here. It just gives a little bit of that background, a little bit of a sales pitch here that we're looking for a qualified dollar for a dollar per year plus utility share of operational costs. And then keeps my name up here. I do have sort of a deadline to submit a letter of interest. I was on the phone with Audra Weiser, who is at the parenting place. They act as the local resource and referral center for both providers and people who are looking for childcare providers. They're a great resource and they've been a, a really great group to work with in this project and then in past lives I've had. The thought here is that to do a more formal request for proposal project where we're asking everybody to submit, you know, how many years do you want to move in? Tell us about what age groups you're going to serve and really have them hammer that stuff out. Would take a lot of work on their end and I'm not sure that it wouldn't scare some of the providers away if we force them and hey, in a month and a half, I need you to put together a full project plan. I think what we're looking for right now is sort of like the first phase of this process is just to put out into the ecosystem what we're offering. And then make sure people understand the terms and then to see if anybody replies as an interested. And then from there, we would sort of take stock. How many people, how many providers do we have who are interested? And based on that, we could then establish a process to select, right? And what would that look like? If we have 10 providers, that's, we're, we'll probably do a more robust RFP process. If we get two providers, maybe we'll work on something a little more informal, right? So sort of a, let's see what we get and have like a sort of contingency based plan of action. And Audra and her comments seem to think like, yep, that seems reasonable. I think providers would be responsive to that. And should this draft sort of make it through tonight, I would sort of refine. Cindy, please don't point out any of my many typos because again, this is just meant to give, what I'm looking for here is not a final product, but more of, is this okay for me to send out? And do I have the group's blessing to do so? So really what it will contain, it's a, it's a grand total of two and a half pages. So this is just the facility information, sort of sells it, like where is it at? What is it a part of? Here's a little bit of background on the fact that it is part of a larger building. I am going to include the site plan and the floor plan that was included as part of the lease and the development agreement so that people can really understand what we're talking about here. And then I just sort of take that executive summary that I presented to you folks to help you understand the sublease because it's, it's really dense. And I, and I summarized it even more is just to kind of hit the highlights. What is the permitted use? What is the term? And then go through annual rent utilities and some of those other things that are required. And then it simply says, if you are interested, submit a letter of interest to me at the city. Tell me who you are, what your name, your business, your contact person. Tell me a little bit about your background and your organization. And then just provide some information on current childcare operations that you're running, right? If you're at multiple locations, I don't need to know what every single, you know, is. But I want to, you know, give us a taste of whether you've done this before and in what capacity is essentially what we're looking at. If, and then the next steps is as I, as I stated, like once the deadline for submission of letters has passed, the city will reach out to each entity and engage in what I saw, say is an interactive process for the development of proposals, exact process and timeline, as well as the criteria on how we will, how we will select will be set at a later date, right? And again, it just depends on like, how many people are we getting? It's kind of silly to do a full RFP process, have 10 pages of expectations and then to have nobody, you know, submit because we scared them off or to have one person, right? So let's see what we get in this initial round. And then I just say, contact me before you submit your letter of support if you have any, or your letter of interest if you have any questions. And that is about the long gist of it. Again, I pulled this together based on previous information, a little bit of feedback from some of the providers I had been in contact with. But if anybody has any recommendations. But if anybody has any recommendations for additions, subtractions from here, other than typos, please go ahead and feel free to launch them out. I think Cindy.
I wanted to ask about the, if operating at multiple locations. I mean, do we, I would be hesitant to have like Kinder Care or some, I think that's the name of a facility has a lot of different franchises, and I wondered if we would want something like that in Barokwa.
Yeah.
I did, I just, since I was up there, I thought I'd ask that, bring that, right?
It's, it's a good question. I think there are a lot of entities who are smaller and have multiple locations that aren't necessarily franchises. You know, the YMC itself has its own early learning center, but then it also has several, you know, child, school age programs throughout the area. And I would say, you know, they do that because they're good at what they do, and, and they've found it successful. And, you know, I, part of what I would say is see who you get. And if you have the choice between a franchise and a non-franchise, and you prefer the non-franchise, then yeah, absolutely. But I would say at this point, it would be, I would really encourage us to keep as many options open as possible until you see what the net drags up. And I, it's probably a better metaphor, but.
Nate, I just really appreciate the way you're approaching it as far as a dialogue. I think just because childcare as a business is difficult to run, it's a very challenging time. And one question I just had, because I speak to childcare providers in La Crosse, is just the, the challenge of health insurance. I don't know if, and I have no idea, obviously, there's financial implications for this, but one of the risks that smaller businesses hold is being able to have, either have health insurance or have health insurance for their providers, part of retention and things like that. And I don't know if, because we're with the city, there's some sort of aspect of that that could be explored as a way to negotiate.
Sure. I, I, I don't really think there's an avenue directly for the city to offer health insurance to non-employees. I mean, these folks would not be, it would be a separate entity. We're sort of making matchmaker here between North Point and a provider, and we're in a position where we have the ability to select on that. Some of the initial conversations I had with a few different providers is whether or not there would be additional city support available and what that could look like. And I said, you know, that's a good question. You know, part of it is get through this, look at the numbers, tell us what you need to make it feasible. But like, right offhand, we don't have a pot of money specifically available to support childcare in the area. At least none that I'm aware of. There may be grants, or maybe other, you know, things that we can get at. Part of what licensed childcare does is open up access to Wisconsin shares. And that makes it feasible for parents to pay those rates that providers need in order to pay their staff sufficiently and possibly afford a health insurance. But good questions. I don't know what that, that path to something like that would be, though. Any other thoughts on proposals, addition, subtractions?
Anything looks good. So you'd like a motion to approve that plan, or are you, do you not need that, and you can just move forward?
What I, I guess what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve this general concept. And that contingent on, one thing I would say is feedback. I, I did ask Audra if she'd be willing to look this over and make suggestions about what you should ask for, which you shouldn't ask for, so just approval to move forward generally in this direction.
Perfect.
And that I don't need to come back to you with the final draft to send it out, as long as this, keeping congruent with this is okay.
This is Todd. I make a motion to approve the RFP that is written for childcare for the North Point Development Project.
This is Amaya, second that motion.
You're looking at Lori, so I'm looking at you. Is that going to work, Lori? Or would you rather not say approve the RFP, but approve the process laid out?
I kind of was writing down what, what Nate had said. It was to approve the general concept of the RFP and to move forward with it.
But the only thing I'll say is that when Todd made his motion, he said as written. And I was like, that's.
Right.
It's just, just so that I can deviate from this if there.
So yes, my motion would be to.
Approve the general concept of the RFP and to move it forward as presented.
Exactly. That's, goodness, that's better himself.
I second that motion.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Moving along, item number fifteen, discussion with possible action regarding twenty twenty-four budget amendments for public works in the library.
Okay, so we had, through the course of doing our monthly financial reviews, had identified a pattern in a couple GLs that would leave us, lead us to considerable overages in spending this year, and that's specifically around health insurance. Two departments that had considerable enrollment in health insurance far above what we had forecasted. Typically, when we do forecasts for health insurance, I get a list of, you know, who's enrolled and stuff like that. All very confidential information just shared between Lori and I. And we just say, this is, this is what we expect to happen. And year over year, it's pretty darn accurate. We, sometimes you miss one way or the other, but departments have a tendency to balance out. This year, we just had considerable increases in enrollment. We talked about that at Personnel and Finance. And so what we also talked about Personnel and Finance is that we have to be very mindful about not, about having good budget performance, a budget to actual. We have to stick to budget, and if we're overspending in certain areas, we have to try to find the money in others. So what I have for you is sort of the plan, so to speak, on how to deal with that going forward. And I'll pop that up on screen now. Just make sure that it actually comes up. All right, and I didn't send this out ahead of time, because it can be quite confusing without the context around it. So I'll try to sort of walk through it here. Let's talk about issue number one. So this right here, we are expecting, because of additional enrollment, a sixty thousand dollar overage in health insurance in this one department. That's a large amount. We can't just say, oh, that's fine, we will take a hit on our cash reserves. So what the proposal is, in talking with Sarah and talking with the mayor, is to essentially borrow for it indirectly. So what that means is there is, there was an increase in street maintenance materials in an effort to do things like county road. And, and Sarah, I think you were going to get me a list of what projects specifically were, though. I don't know if you want to come up and speak to that. But there was a number of projects that we had levied for that were just going to be part of operations. The proposal here is to move that sixty thousand dollars from here, which is why it's showing a cert, you know, the budget was a hundred and thirty-five. The amended budget would be seventy-five thousand dollars, which nets us sixty thousand dollars, right? That would move to long-term debt proceeds, that GL. And then we would borrow additional money. I'm sorry, it would move it to street maintenance capital projects, and then our debt proceeds would increase by sixty thousand dollars. So long story short, we move it from one GL to another. And then because it's in that new GL as a capital project, we can then borrow for it. Okay? Obviously, the downside of it is we have to borrow, right? However, the, when we were going through this budgetary process, and part of what Sarah had explained today regarding infrastructure projects is we're behind schedule, right? And that this is a resurfacing project, it's certainly a candidate for, to be a borrowing project. We were just trying to do it this year as an operating project to save on interest costs. So the outcome of this would be is we wouldn't, it wouldn't hit our cash reserves. We can make sure that everybody still gets health insurance who's enrolled, and we can still make sure that the projects we had targeted to get done, get done. And so that was, those four items would be the budget amendment to deal with that particular overage. I realize that that spreadsheet probably just makes everything very confusing, but that's essentially what it is.
Pardon me. Did you say this deals with a library problem too?
This is issue number one. This is, this is just public works. This is issue number one, is to, is to talk about the public works issue here. So that would be proposal number one, if you wanted to prove, I don't know if you want to approve that amendment separately or together with the second portion.
You can just do them as presented. It'd just be easier than trying to do the numbers back and forth like that.
Perfect.
One motion as presented at the end, yeah.
So here's number two, then, is the library, and this is on a much smaller scale. So same issue, additional enrollment, we didn't forecast, our forecast didn't hold up to actuals. What we would do here is we would decrease our budget for building maintenance. As of right now, I think we are tracking okay. While I don't love dipping into building maintenance, I think we can defer projects, particularly because we, you know, we do, are working with some newer buildings. I don't love having to do that, but again, if it means dipping in our cash reserves, I think it's not a bad plan. And in reality, the library doesn't have a ton of discretionary spending where they can just choose not to pay things, unless it would be a huge hit to the continuity of their services. So like, closing doors for a full day, we didn't think that the council nor the library board would necessarily have the appetite for it. So in an effort to support them, I said, you know, we could probably five, five thousand dollars in the building maintenance budget in order to help them along. After that, it leaves a deficit of eighty-three hundred. And in speaking with Trina, she identified a number of items where she could cut in order to meet budget for the library, and that's part of what the library has to do. Once they receive a budget, they have to meet budget. But I would not recommend at this time that we actually do a budget amendment, because we don't know yet. There's an operate, there's a possibility that certain numbers in the library go better than others. There's a chance that, you know, in general, there's more revenue coming in from the library that would offset the additional expenses, whether it's fines and forfeitures or other items.